I'd like to call the November planning, I'm sorry, the December planning for B to order. First on our agenda is approve the minutes from last meeting. I'm looking over.
Second.
By norm, second by date, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Next on our agenda is approve our lease voucher. Approve our lease voucher, will you approve?
Second.
Motion by Jim, second by Bob, any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
So who's the, I'm not voting for the, with the alternate.
Just. Yeah, so Sandy called and she had to stay at work. First on the town boards or first, I'm sorry, first on our referral is forty-four, ten and forty-four, twenty Eastern Europe. Anyone here for that referral?
I don't think there is. But is there any questions?
Well, we usually look to have the applicant here to ask some of the questions.
One, one question I had was the number of accessory buildings on the site. He shows a barn, I looked at it on Google Maps. And it's hard for me to see or tell how many accessory buildings are on the site. Looks like there's at least three that I saw. And that would be, I think, more than we want.
I'd like to make a motion to, to set number one aside in case they show up tonight.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Right, we're gonna go to number two, every solar which is coming off our agenda that was put out on the assuming the state will.
Yeah.
Keep out of the over cases.
But I'm mistaken, I thought it was taken after the, the, the term like the, it was so small.
Okay. These guys already approved it. Two is now, uh, communications received in file one through four. Is everybody good with the, our deadline dates and next meeting dates, did you see that they changed next year?
Do you have it? You say they changed.
Oh, that's not our, I'm sorry. If you were. So then I'm going to five, which was me long range planning.
Okay.
Which was the finishing up, um, design and performance standards, that's what was done at last meeting, everything was kind of finished up and then they were gonna print it out, send it to us next meeting.
Dave, Dave, does that basically wrap up what, um, what that committee was doing?
For that one, yes, for that particular item, the design and performance standards. And then they're moving on to, uh, some form of design and performance standards for residential work.
Subdivision.
Subdivision, right. Okay, under unfinished business is long road distribution facility. You understand these guys wanna give us a little three, uh. Overview of what's happening?
Yes, thank you for every group of, thank you for the, for the, for the board, I'm Corey Alagak, and welcome. Here is Tim Weber from Half-Assed, that's you all, this is Pat, our associate, part of the unit. Thank you for providing us with a couple of minutes to tell you about the spec time modifications that we have proposed to the long road distribution facility. Um, as we know, in supplementary generic environment impact study process, where we're working through supplemental speaker, as part of that, and we prefer alternative that's been agenda. We do have to revise the site plan committee. And we recognize the importance of this body as part of the municipal tool process, once we're through with the speaker to review and evaluate the site plan. So we thought it would be helpful to comment, give you just a quick overview, not asking great sort of approvals or anything other than any comments that you can take back with us to further refine and improve the site plan. And again, it's appreciated our team to turn this over to Jeff Rudolph to walk you through the modifications that we made in consultation and input with the town to come through what we do with a, a, a fast and improved project from where we started. And again, the, the input that we received is so critical for the project, and we saw this in the town through the pump, to then see what we've done so far, and to extend and to add any additional comments for us to continue to refine before we make the site plan through the process, we appreciate your, so without, I'm gonna leave that to you.
All right, it's gonna be one second, we just have some drawings. Again, that's all, I'm, uh, here with Pat, our associate. Sure, that's you, 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 oh, L. All right, so obviously the, uh, the predicted site has quite a long history going back all the way from nineteen ninety-one. When the original, the original proposal was proposed for maybe two hundred and seven acres approximately. Uh, way back then, because it was such a big site, it was identified as having potential for significant environmental impact. At that time, it went into and completed a, uh, environmental impact statement. When at the time, the town, you know, get it, thirty years ago, looked at an entire long list of all the potential impacts from industrial development that could potentially have everything from habitat, a lot of land, traffic, stormwater, et cetera, et cetera. At the time, that consisted of both over the mix of industrial usage and all of the office stages. It included a new dedicated road that was the only thing seen by the town, and a number of different outfield, which were a total of approximately just under one point seven million total square feet. Which is obviously a relatively large number, but again, we do them with two hundred and seventy acres, so, um, you know, the amount of the potential development is rather significant. Of that two hundred and seventy acres, fifty-six acres was known residential on the northwestern portion of the site, with a balance of approximately a hundred and forty-one acres being known, um, and one residential. So. So after. On the left side of the.
I think it is, you know, it's supposed to be the whole.
Hundred and forty-one acres in M one.
Yeah, I think it says one, uh, residential, you know, it's a, um.
I might have, yeah.
One forty-seven, three hundred and fourteen, or sixty-six residential.
Fifty-six for residential, one forty-one for M one, so a total of two hundred and seven. So our proposed site plan, you know, that's put up here. This is as the board and other boards become more familiar with the actual environmental impact statement, which we have now prepared. For this plan, it was referred to as alternative for, and it's preferred that, or plan, I'm sorry. Um, as part of the EIS, we've gone through a number of different alternatives, a lot of which were based on previous proposals that have been presented to the town over the years. Going all the way back to originally to that nineteen ninety-one plan. Um, several years ago, I'm sure the board is aware, there was a, another project that was proposed to the site that was a similar size, actually, the vertical figure. Um, that eventually fell through, uh, but included a lot more service, a lot more impact than the proposed plan here. Um, then a couple of years after that, after that project had moved on, if it actually ended up somewhere, I know that that project ended up somewhere else, uh, up in the northern Niagara County. A proposal for this distribution center was brought forward to the town. Um, at that time, it was a different configuration, uh, which I'll hit into some of the details here in a little bit. But when that project was presented, that's when the town board, the agency essentially said, okay, well, um, similar to the nineteen ninety-one proposal. You know, this project is a big piece of property and it has potential for environmental impact, so it would be two of us and the applicant to once again go through the environmental impact statements. So that's where we are now, in the relatively early stages of, um, that document. Our office has prepared a detailed environmental impact statement, that's really a supplemental environmental impact statement. That includes a whole plethora of different factors, everything from traffic to bringing to our own facilities, to habitat, um, with kind of a non, including a big pool of impact analysis. As part of that process, and going through our different alternatives, we started to identify some things that we could do to help lessen the impact on the proposal. Based on the size of the required building, the associated loading dock and parking. Um, the biggest thing that we noticed when Patro got involved was previously, the building was being proposed on anywhere from ten to twelve feet of fill. So we had a relatively big area, uh, limited supply of loading, for all the associated parking, loading docks, that would be placed up pretty high in the air. Um, that did two things, first of all, made the project a lot more visible in terms of final site, and it also resulted in a tremendous amount of effort in order to build that pad up. Um, in order to account for the effort that was needed, at the time, the design included some very significant ponds, some that were up to fifty foot feet. And also, one of the larger ponds, which was actually located in the northwest corner of the parcel, in the residential zone end. So we were talking about having to move over a million cubic yards of material in order to design work at that time. So the first thing that we did on our team is we said, okay, let's see if we can figure out a way to take this building, to lower it way down closer to these different three. So that A, we're not gonna be invisible, and B, we're not gonna generate all that need for the cost of sale. Essentially what that allowed us to do is greatly reduce the amount of construction in traffic in terms of vehicles being on the road and going to go to the site. The duration of construction, we don't have to move here with the materials. And also allowed us to reduce the amount of ponds that we needed to generate material as well as the depth of those ponds. Including, um, completely eliminating any disturbances or excavations or any pond from that residential zone. Plan in the northwest corner, which also backed up a bunch of the users. So we felt that that was a pretty significant improvement because all of a sudden, the neighbors, who were gonna potentially have a relatively large pond, that now would just have an open area, seeing that sixty-six acres that we're not proposing to touch for, do any of that. So that was one of the biggest improvements. The other thing that we decided to do was completely flip the building a hundred and eighty feet. Previous proposal for this site, as we brought forth, had the loading docks, which are now shown on the bottom of the page, were east facing, were facing off to the west, towards the residential zone. Uh, or actually residence, residence properties on Sunset and to the west. So that even though there is about fifteen hundred feet of separation, those loading docks and the noise associated with packing dock in the west could potentially have a significant impact, uh, on those properties. So we took the entire site and kind of flipped it over, so now those loading docks faced to the east, were, uh, one ninety, one ninety. Uh, so that was eliminating or creating a huge potential to impact those, um, single sample residences. So lowered the building and then flipped it, adjusted it further to the east, um, to really try to respect all those properties. And then what we're also proposing to do is we start to get to some of the more greater assets of the design, um, for example, variety of the town mall, along the entrance road, uh, with the ancillary wall that will help break up the town's tough entry and exiting. And also some significant berms that you see would go cheap there, which would help to visually screen and break up the parking lot. Again, which is primarily visible for people going up and down, um, the one ninety. In terms of some of the things that we found through our studies, you know, dark wetlands, for example, there are some pockets of wetlands that we will be conserving, and there is a gray ditch. That is on our, um, base of our property that we will be relocating. Uh, that would essentially be the case for any developers who approach them, property, due to its location. But we are proposing, and currently in the process of going through a permit application with the US Army Force, we're proposing some significant, maybe, naturally building in some significant habitat. As part of the, um, gray ditch relocation and restoration process, and that's obviously the blue line that you see there. But that new creek, um, will name a number of, um, deep pool areas that have a lot of exciting vertical pools that would provide, today. That would actually be somewhat increased with some of our stormwater ponds that not only do they function as stormwater management, bring in, you know, a lot of, or, 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 certainly, it's also certain amount of value, simply as a, to have a debt on those. So that wetland removal process is well underway. Um, and we have limited impact, primarily this would be the real pocket that are on site. And we're staying away from a much larger state wetland appropriate to western project. So where you see all that green area, overall woods and wetlands that we're not proposing to touch whatsoever. Um, stormwater, obviously, we just have a big danger all the time, you see all the ponds that we are proposing. Um, we have no problem with all the required regulations, um, you know, for that, you know, in much more detail, much further down the road, with more precise time review. Uh, but if they want to go with traffic, everyone, you know, is of course concerned with the traffic. And, you know, looking at the number of parking stalls, the loading docks, the type of facility, you know, I'm not gonna stand up here and tell you that, oh, it's gonna have no impact on traffic, and that hardly any part. It is a fairly significant traffic generator in terms of, you know, how projects go. Um, but where would you rather have a large traffic generator than the, the highway, where there's very easy access off and on from the one ninety to the long road? Um, so we are proposing some improvements to ensure there's no decrease in level of service, the traffic doesn't get worse for anybody. Um, that's happening at the one ninety of the entrance ramp essentially, and then two more traffic lights down on Grand Island Boulevard. One at the intersection of Long Road and Grand Island Boulevard, and the second one on New North Town offering. So that will all be part of the nation that you all will see in much clearer detail as the project moves on. Um, you know, one of the things that come up often that we've heard already is, what about the number of trucks, how many trucks are there going to be, how many issues added to the site? And whatever reason we've heard this wide range of numbers now, of what studies people have seen, but the actual numbers that are in the traffic studies, uh, we look at peak traffic occurring during the peak hours, considering that terminology in these traffic studies. But when you look at the peak hours, the most truck traffic is generated from A empty towers. And that's when we've had twenty trucks entering and twenty exiting, um, that would be the maximum, so, you know, essentially one truck leaving the site every three minutes or so, one truck entering the site every three minutes or so. Then that number dropped down to twelve trucks entering, I assume, during the, um, two empty towers, which is slightly lower. And that also assumes that the truck traffic is gonna be at the same time as peak hours traffic. Uh, many times, the distribution facility will actually, uh, schedule their truck traffic, so it doesn't occur during peak hours for a few obvious reasons. One, so their drivers aren't entering, then you're gonna have more traffic on the road. Um, but two, because during the peak hours, it's typically when you have your shift. And they wanna have the most amount of trucks coming in at the same time as the whole shift in, with the most amount of employees coming in, um, in or out. So that point coming in, pointing to the A and peak hour, really is a more extreme scenario, if you will. But we are trying to study that, we're looking for a possible big scenario, so that we're not, um, underestimating any of that, um, potential impact. We also did look at, um, traffic volumes, I think going back to one of the previous projects that was proposed on the site, there was some concern with some of the bridges, not just the long road bridge, but also we had Grand Island Road Bridge, Grand Island South. Um, what they done found effectively is bridges in our traffic studies that are current, well, we are not, but the current traffic volume that are entering and making, taking islands are, um, lower, significantly lower than what they were in two thousand and four, two thousand and seven, all that data is entered, if you go and take a look at it. But even with the addition of our traffic, which is less than two percent of what's there today, um, doesn't even approach the numbers that it once was. And actually, the term that we use when we have a focus, is that the traffic that we're adding, you know, is ridiculous, like, big ridiculous, is less than daily, um, population traffic. Going to give a day of the entire road, we're, we're impacted by that traffic we have. But we do have a fairly significant number of trips that are going to be really just in this stretch from our private entrance on Long Road. Down to either the South Town Rim or a little bit further down to Grand Island Boulevard, um, to the North Town, or the Ace event, or the twenty percent of the North Town. So that all is detailed, you know, all the major times we're proposing to vote, and we can talk about that to any degree that the board, you know, would be comfortable with. Um, just to feel anything quickly, we did a, um, detailed visual analysis to demonstrate that from any of those residential properties around the outskirts of the project. We wouldn't be able to visually see the operation, you know, now, maybe during the winter, when the leaves are off the trees, if you're looking the exact right way, could you possibly catch the headlights? You know, necessarily think so, but I think they would be possible, but still, given that fact, we're, you know, trying to mitigate that much because of the, uh, redoing the orientation, um, of the building, you know, a bit of the, that noise study to ensure that. Truck entering and exiting wouldn't be turned on a lot of these properties. And all of that is all over to a twelve hundred deep document, uh, EIS, as it's submitted to the town. Procedure wise, as Mr. Algar was stating earlier, um, we're pretty early in the process as a whole. Our draft environmental impact statement, with all of the performance and studies as then submitted, and certainly being reviewed by, uh, a plethora of consultants that have been hired on the town to have to review our work. Uh, once that document is accepted as complete, it will be distributed to all the, including the board, at this point, to have the opportunity to review all those studies in great detail, and to provide a comment that our team is looking forward to. But we thought it would be beneficial, there's some reporting this evening, it's gonna be a little bit of that high level covering, just so when, uh, the twelve hundred deep document is to death, you guys have a real idea of, um, you know, what it's gonna be like. So with that, I don't know if Tim or Corey had any condition on that. But, um, you know, we'd be happy to answer time that we have in this evening, if not, again, primary purpose was to do that.
Do you take your power delivery for the facility, electric power?
Where does it come into the building? Probably is gonna come in somewhere around the northeast corner.
From where?
Where, we usually talk about, if you want to do some of that.
Overhead, underground?
Underground.
Are you gonna have backup generators?
Generators, foot heaters, and power.
And those backup generators, what you wear?
Um, most likely screened in the berm area.
Oh, they've been, I waited for a start.
The generators?
Yeah.
Yes, in so, in so much that checking those at full levels versus the actual level of trucks, the trucks and some of the other, you know, for the.
It has, I mean, it has, but.
More mentioned more with the.
Yeah, okay.
Not to me, it's not.
Some of the other people that were involved in that project, if they were thinking about making that residential area, it's kind of a long line, thinking of perhaps there's a new kind of, they're practicing. Are you thinking of doing that instead of having a residential making that?
Yes, we have. We have offered that as an option through the EIS. Um, you know, we have really, you know, just developing that, we did look at an option as part of our planning process of what about if we put in residential road and develop that as a single lot, something that we put, you know, fire supply back there. So, I mean, we are ready to do that, so, you know, assuming the private move forward, it would be possible for that area.
Too much traffic within our, on the Dell Road?
Um, very little, about three percent of our total traffic. One of the things, so none of the truck traffic would come down to Dell. We would, you know, certainly have already assumed for that. So essentially, we just have people very familiar with the area, who might come in, um, their employees parking in these lots. But what we did, when we split the building, is we optimized it a lot more convenient for people to come in Long Road, because if you did come in from the Dell, and you were parking in this lot, you would have to come in, literally drive past the entire truck area, and travel all the way around the site. Just get over to the parking space, which is a lot more convenient to come off the long road. And again, that was one benefit of the revised information, was to dissuade people from using the Dell. But I think there is some gallop, that's, that's totally, that's not possible.
Your entrance off a long road remains the same as it was before?
Yes.
So, how is it still gonna stay?
This house right here, I guess. Yeah, that's where we have the soundboard. But yeah, that's really the only part we can have on Long Road, you know, I have a lot of. But it does provide ample separation from the. South Town off. South Town, I'm in.
Smashing.
I have a couple of questions, but one, is this expected to be a twenty-four hour operation?
Um, I would refer to, that question is the, um.
Albert?
Make a quick answer.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we're, we're expecting a single twenty-four seven operation, is from the, for any.
So it's top expected?
A top expected, this facility right over the sides are almost always operations, that's what we've done, without providing more than SCS and.
Great. We're just worried about backup alarms at three in the morning. Okay, so, um, I have some other questions too, but later, though.
I, I think it's, should be stated too, that you meant, you kind of compared this project to the last project. And I think that's like an apple to a watermelon. Your, your building is not ninety-seven feet high like the Olive slash Amazon building was, I think people should understand that. There's a lot of things that they needed the PDD for to get. Their project to be accepted, where you're not asking for a PDD, you're going in as an M one. So I think I, I just wanted to make that point.
No, and that's a very fair point, I, I would just attempt to go through this progression, and if you're part of, don't know it.
I understand, I just wanted to just clarify that, because I want people to think this is, you know, Amazon all over again, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, that's.
It's not, because now I'm under the understanding that this owner is gonna own the whole parcel. Where Amazon was only owning the M one section, a hundred and roughly fifty acres, and they weren't buying the sixty-six acres at one point in their, where, I think that should be understood. The, the owner owns the whole thing.
Right, and therefore, you know, that control or, in that category, you provide some.
Do you have any conceptual, uh, elevations of the building? How do you think the building that they, that, for a couple of months?
Yeah, we do have building elevations that have been provided from the EIS, um, I didn't. Bring in. So here is one of our, we, I guess, it's gonna be the highest volume rendering, but you'll start to see some images that look like this in the EIS, or even people now, just intend to supply different pictures.
Yeah, we, we've seen those lately in pack, and maybe as you asked once, if you have any. So Jeff, T, this is a speculative warehouse, how are you arriving at the, um, frequency of truck rents?
Um, well, first of all, as we do, and very required, we would all, we assume the worst case scenario. So we also use the IP traffic generation manual, and essentially, they have a specific lane category for these types of projects, these, you know, five, six, seven million, two million square foot. Um, facilities that have different users, that are distribution, um, and kind of chart them across, not just, you know, to do it across the whole country, and they also do a ring joint. Then we kind of take the worst case scenario, and then we run our, our type of agency based on the worst case scenario. So based on the future users that end up in this building, you know, I would bet that we generate a lot like traffic awards, too, and we have to assume the words, that we don't end up that bad.
So you used the word users, so is it anticipated that this would be a multi-tenant type facility as opposed to a single user?
I mean, I don't wanna speak for Tim and his group, but they would much prefer to say the user. Um, but if they, you know, they have two, five hundred thousand, so they would consider that.
It's, it's, is it correct that it's my understanding that the owner of this project also has similar Hy-Vee warehouses in Rochester, Syracuse area?
They have, we have a lot, two miles from my house.
Okay.
Oh, yes, they have many, one of their four business models, that's very familiar.
So if they're looking for data, they've got the data.
I can speak to that just.
Yep.
I told everybody on the back desk, um, yes, we actually purchased the team in Rochester fourteen, fifteen years ago, they're operating. Uh, we have twenty-five munitions abilities, for, you know, experience for that, and a tiny, go to set up the building, be able to work with different truck, different users. Um, so this is nothing new to us, and, uh, so we, and we hold this property in the building for years, we have other properties out there, and here in county, in the North County, and just, you know, a great location, and some of my best, and our experience.
Any other questions from anyone?
So, so one to ten? Ten, it's one to ten.
And we'll all certainly have a question? Anything else you'd like to add?
No, um, thank you very much for providing us this opportunity, and of course, as we're looking along, we'll report through the student comment, from the board, not as a part of the EIS, to the student body, to the unit. But also when we eventually kind of get further down the pipeline, if you have that.
Okay. Thanks for coming.
I've been talking with, I've been talking with, you know, important people up today, we have a, a number of drafts that come in, from there, those have gone to the town board. Um, you know, trying to decide is the town board going to have you address those comments at this time, or get you groups and see if they're, you know, we don't wanna do work, rework, work, rework, so we do that, so. The board is trying to decide a how handle those, we still have some that are due, and we're about halfway, half or so, I think, or maybe just to touch over, I think, near my conversation, of receiving those.
of receiving those, um, and just trying to figure the best, most efficient way for everybody to work out.
Yeah, that sounds good. And we look forward to seeing what the town board has to do, uh, thoroughly consistent with that.
Okay, I have Rich, oh, go ahead. You know, without too much speculating as to the timing, uh, what's the estimate in terms of, uh, just that, the uh.
I don't have a crystal ball on how the board, how the board wants, I mean, I, you know, I.
Really, I, I guess it should be in terms of, so the studies coming in, so that at that point, Tom would.
We've already got capital, about having them back. I mean, anticipating the balance of them before we're done at Christmas or, you know, um, you know, the board having them in their hands, that, you know, the reorg obviously played a little bit of a role, but I assume that, you know, having some process, you know, around the birth of the year, you know, they need twice a month. So we're already looking at, you know, next week is the last one in the number, so.
It's a hard time of year, yeah.
So, I know you're, you're talking, you know, obviously, you know, after the first of the year, reorg meeting, they're probably not gonna do it for the rest of then, so second meeting in January, first meeting, but we're potentially. Smack my crystal ball, that's my guess.
Okay, great. Thank you all very much. Thanks for coming in. One stop car wash? Ain't you guys in the back? No, you're there. You're, you're sure?
Yeah.
So again, I'm, I'm Norman Abraham, I'm a private engineer, um, on this and uh, please. James uh. Going to be the owner. So what we did, when it's based on the comments, um, from, from the board of the last meeting, we uh revised the rendering and, and a, a, a general site plan to kind of, to kind of show maybe a little bit better, um, what, what the final um, elevation budget would look like. So the comment was related to the vacuums. And on the previous rendering, we just had a generic rendering on there with a white, uh, with a white vacuum, but in this one, what we did was we colored them blue, similar to the building. And then the uh, the tower and, and the arm that would be the most obvious were are painted black in this picture. And, you know, the, based on the layout and the, the site plan the way it is, these are gonna be about eight feet from the edge of pavement on the road. So it's gonna be set back quite a ways. And with the, the two vicinity streets in the front, they're gonna, you know, and some landscaping in, in front of them, I think with the color schemes that we're proposing, I, I don't think it would really stand out at all.
I can't see it from here.
Right, because they're blue, a little bit darker, well, no, I think it's the same, the same blue as, that's on the building. And then I could, I could.
I think it's not gonna stand out.
Right, right. So I can appreciate the fact that, that.
I'm, I agree. And is, is the siding system?
Yes, it's a refacing of these.
I think, I think it's one of the nice.
So that's, even though we didn't put in huge trucks, because obviously the owner is investing a lot of money into renovating the building and he doesn't wanna hide everything that's new in there, so he wants, but, you know, so I, I think this shows better what, what concerns it was.
Was there, want to go down that apartment?
Yeah.
Okay. That's it. The rendition that shows the sidewalks, you know, sidewalks.
Right.
You know, reads, you know, English to be.
Yes. Yeah, and we added them to the, to the site plan and, and we put it on the rendering as well, so.
Okay.
Sidewalks are.
Can you hold up yours, that you slid?
Yeah. That's kind of upside down, but this is the Grand Island Boulevard, so we have the sidewalk. And what we did was we looked at, um, we lined it up with the, the plaza, a couple buildings up the street, so that that's on the same line with the sidewalk at the plaza.
And that's, the signage reads the same on either side, is it two sided?
Yes.
Signage, meaning the sign off front?
Yeah.
I think that's there.
Yeah.
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 So, any, anybody else have any other questions?
The other four bays that are there, they're remaining fifteen?
Uh, yes, we're gonna lengthen them a little bit. I think we're coming out an extra maybe seven or eight feet. I mean, when the project is started, the, the rendering is the way that it's really get, we're gonna reuse our, the uh, combination where they're there, but we're, we're just trench up and provide, uh, proper, proper bearing support for the, for the new, the new front.
Are you putting doors in those?
Are they, no, I think those are open.
They're open, um, in the end time, the end time, it's not that hard. It's originally designed to, they're called for not lawyers, um, they're kind of helping with the medical. Why not come from the front? And why not?
Yeah, give you more fueling, allows, allows traffic.
My peril is a grown up all of it.
Oh, yeah.
Well, that one's there. It's, it's the main goal, around the sea peril.
Oh, yeah. That royal eye.
Now, is this something we wanna make a motion and move forward on?
Well, first thing. Are you here first? Are you here first?
Well, well, he, he, yes, he was last time. And it looks like he's corrected, won't be very well, of our last meeting.
I'll make the motion that, uh, can, can view of the, the renderings and the changes, uh, on the site plan. I was just like, that's me. I'd second that.
Motion by Bob, seconded by, is there any further discussion?
Or just, is there a new site plan? Sure.
No, but we will, we'll update. It, it's really a minor.
I'm, I'm excited with that motion. I, I'm assuming it's the site plan that John explained. Is, is that, is that site plan dated or marked that we can refer to in X?
Um, yes, it is. Well. Yeah, that's, that's an old.
What are they, what are they?
Well, no, but it also has to be stamped.
Yes. Well, yeah, I, I can, I could submit a revise, um, that was pick the renderings and they're gonna come tomorrow.
No, I think we can motion addition, all of that. The site plan is dated and stamped.
By, by Mr. Avery?
What we wanna refer to when you show this tonight, is the land.
Yes. Yeah, I mean, I know Bob, I mean, I'll, I'll get.
Casey's, Casey's, um, her, I think, too, so Casey knows.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, this is, this is an addition. Right, this is the dish.
Hey, any other time? Tim, are you okay? Everybody good? Good? On the favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
Almost all anyone opposed? Well, I'll suck next. Happy holidays. Next on our agenda is the concrete, I have reviewed of the PDD where it's basically something just. I assume only that given for forty, forty-five cents.
The minimum and maximum, uh, hearing was more is that we're still keeping the twenty-five acre load, we're creating a ten acre. So we have a minor danger per se.
We have the same requirement, the both.
Yeah, once twenty-five acres, ten acres, there, which is a stupid question.
But there's a lot, there's a lot of discussion, but this came out last time and I think it is more confusion than the whole process we've reviewed. You know, I don't see any reason for the lack of danger. We're, you know, that building, that side, the little, little.
So just make up EPG, ten acres or greater.
Yeah, and, and the town board essentially was gonna decide whether they accept the PDD recommendation or not, based upon you know, the details of, of the plan, the site plan. I'll, we're exploring that, we have, we're just.
Things are, oh, what opposite do we need to distinguish that between twenty-five acres and ten acre? Or we need that.
They were looking at.
Be minor.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but we're gonna twenty-five acres for residential, ten acres for the commercial base, that's correct? Trying to remember.
Yeah.
But, is that correct?
So the. So I. Yeah, twenty-five acre.
Residential. Right, and the whole, whole idea there, I think they, uh, with the drive and mixed use thing, which was to get our, a little more usable use, if that's correct. I think it's more private, but we didn't really wanna give it a break, strictly residential use. Um, we're facing, I would say, incentive for the wrong word, but I think we might have a problem. So if you were to play ball, a little more of that suit, say this. Uh, when you build a commercial element or residential, you know, that's private minimization. It's not. So, but is that what you wanna retire?
But do we need, do we need a specific heavy major and minor?
Well, well, again, that's.
He can only have residential, you can have twenty-five acres, not a ten acre, that's what you were trying.
Right. But if you're putting mixed use with business and, again, mixed use buildings and stuff like that, we're willing to minimize our acres requirements to drive.
Does that make a big difference?
I think if you have a ten acre lot, that we want a residential lot. They're gonna come in here and, like I woke up, we want to do a ten acre residential, but we're saying, no, I mean, it's twenty-five acres, you're residential. Cause I think you might get a lot of small, people saying, I want a residential lot, ten.
But I don't think that says that you.
But, but what this is saying is, though, if you have a business with smaller lots available. You only have, you have a ten acre. So it's an incentive to do a different. You're not, you're not stuck, we're doing, trying to find twenty-five acres.
Right, so, let me make this statement, if we're trying to push mixed use, if this was the right way to do it, I'm not sure.
I don't know, ten acres is a lot of that.
I think it is. I think. I personally agree five.
I just agree, I mean, anyways, why do we bother with that distinction?
So, okay.
Well, I mean, I mean. I don't, I don't understand why we bother with the distinction.
Well, we can recommend that the motion is though major and minor be on S. Now, it talks to the town board about state whether they wanna action for every condition.
Yeah, at the end of the day, that's. I mean, we're looking at eleven or twelve acres right now. You know, what they know if it was new, so.
And it, and it, and the backwards part of that whole thing, is it approved for everything on there except for, uh, residential? There's the only use that it wasn't approved for was residential. That's why it had to be approved, it went the other way. So we weren't trying to get more business there, like allow, we weren't trying to get transit there, so allow, we're trying to get hotel rooms that allow. Billy wasn't allowed with, you know, long term residential, that's why we had a PDD that was backwards. Right. It was kind of, it was kind of a very common theme, a lot of people like try to prepare other things, it's completely backwards. So it's a different, a different scenario. Um, you know, that, that's the reason we're trying to minimize the, so we can, so we can allow more mixed use or something. Play around a little bit with that. You guys don't think it's a good idea?
So we don't think we want that. So they do, do, uh.
So he's asleep at night?
I don't know.
I don't think we do.
I think it's.
It's intended pretty neat situations where you're gonna have twenty-five percent of space, then you can be, you know, create a nice development. Or if you have wanting to give a, you know, third of an acre lot. Why are you gonna do PDBs?
We might back home. So, while I thought we were playing with this, trying to figure out how to allow mixed use more. And uh, we're trying to actually break the code, allow the two, so. How to make it work. Um, but uh, this is where it kept blowing up, we put on, uh, you know, Boulevard. And you don't allow, talking about the, you know, having single family homes, you're a two year old man. So you have, uh, people sitting on your phone, single family home on, you wanna add on with. Casey, and they're obviously gonna do that if it's not all forms. And they say, well, those are the barber shop. And I'm like, that's like, yeah, they're like, that's, that's the general, on a mall, right? That was so sweet, right away. And if there's no exit, well, then we'll have to have a lot of holes. So that's, that's the period, so we thought, some, some are acres, another, yes, you feel stuff. And the iPhone was like, my life, forty-nine point. So that's why we never really did that, mixed use law, I got that. It was only like, somebody was blowing up.
And I think, look what you're saying is, is that if you had twenty-five acres to the law originally, we're trying to reduce. We had to take eighty steps to get to our low threshold. From zero to five hundred in that shot, so.
We don't want it.
I think, I think that.
Play out and put back.
I think that's what, uh, long range, you know, come up with all of those.
Well, I can just say that if you have a ten, twenty-five. That's what was the same. As we residential owners.
You know, twenty-five hundred residential.
Twenty-five are strictly residential. We don't want to overhave. Oh, I didn't mix use.
I mean, and he's wanted to bless it, so then the twenty-five, makes you.
Okay. Uh, over. Well, you, you.
No, no, not for, residential, but any, anything you deal with one time, okay, but, but we're gonna let, uh, any, engage in mixed use. So just wait, we'll engage.
Okay.
Strictly.
Oh, anything, oh, we only buy these.
Yeah, so we're looking at visual, thirty, seven dollars for mixed use and twenty-five dollars for strictly residential.
Why don't we just allow a mixed use use in our business, especially when we have an hour.
Did I just?
On new bill.
On new bills, okay. Yeah, I, I mean, yeah, I get that, I do understand that.
You know, it may not be real easy, right?
Yeah, we should also say, we're paying a limit on, some of the new things, ask us for a variance to minimize the PDD acre department. And we have a staff, so we can control, somebody can put in a foreign server barber shop in their house and adding up, not becoming used. Understand? So that's kind of, you know, trigger to the egg, and I agree, and I do agree, because I understand that was a whole national, I, whatever it came up with. So, I mean, it wasn't, I mean, we don't affect them on a code, but we're still, you know what I mean, we might help in there. Um, but we're trying to minimize it too, like that's foster. So, I mean, it wasn't, I mean, we don't affect them on a code, but we're still, you know what I mean, we might help in there, um, but we're trying to minimize it too, like that foster, if people come up with a P D D, especially, uh, you know, kind of, and like, stuff like that. You know, like, found very, very showing, uh, and away, and stuff like that.
I know long range looked into other townships, and some of them had huge amount of P D Ds, and they were all coming up with some type of rulings to try and control them, control them.
Yeah, we don't want to completely just open fuzzy, but we want to entice a little more of the suit.
Well, I think this starts that.
Probably that lower, that, the point, not being the answer. Like that, wherever they go. Right, yeah, that's the next, I think that's really the next thing.
This is the first step.
Just coming back, right, so old. Yeah, exactly, it's so old, it's new again, right, yeah. Living above the barber shop.
Like Main Street, that, or was all either owner occupied or various apartments upstairs.
All the hours after you.
Yeah, that they've all got shut down, I didn't want that, and now things, it's like, you know, it's like, you're gonna go back.
Everything.
About.
Sorry, go through, right, um, not to jump down another rabbit hole, but I know, I know you guys struggled with, uh, a sunset, like, uh, situation on the P D D, because it does take so long to get through the process. You know, your wetlands and stuff, like, it's so long, you don't want some people to lose their P D D distinction, because they were hung up by D C or Corps, or Surabat Lane, or fill in the blank. And I, I, listen, I'm very sympathetic, I understand, I mean, you, you don't get their project flushed down the foot, because they were stuck waiting on another, hence to make a decision. One thing that we did approach the idea on, take this, accept this for, is that somehow if you get a P D D, to have a reporting degree, where every year, every other year, you sit, not, not randomly, Tom, where would you sit, Tom, where, tell them where you're at, we tell you where they're at, and just kind of keep the conversation open. So these people know that P D D walked away, come back twenty years later, and someone must put solar, they all know that's a P D D, um, you know. No, but particularly, particularly, it would be nice to keep the, the door of dialogue open between a P D D, uh, you know, applicant and.
Right, and when we were discussing that, my, my thought was that the town has to sort of notice that your, your clock is ticking.
Well, I think that's our criteria, that very deep, that thou shall, and we shall, at the town, you know, stick, uh, you know, every other year, let's just put, put that on, you show us your experience before, we'll show you what's going on around the corner, let's make sure we're all comfortable. But I think for somebody to get a P D D and walk away for twenty years, you know, and then come back, it's like, I would be sad to come off, I think that's on your list.
We, we had a lot of discussion about that very point months ago, I think you were on the road.
No, I would not hear it so much.
Yeah, but anyway, the snapshot of it all was, you know, how long do you give an applicant, there was some variation in terms of how board members felt about that, I mean.
Right.
Some board members felt that, uh, you know, you need to give somebody five years or seven years, and, and we were close to coming up with, uh, you know, a, a drop dead timeframe at the time.
Right.
And so, um, you know, right now, the way it stands is the town board, again, is the ultimate arbiter.
Yeah.
I think it's written that after two years, the town board may have it revert back to, not shall, but may have it revert back, or revert back to what? You know, and, and I want to have, you know, kibosh for perfectly good plans, so, if, if, you know, if you, if you're gonna do this review thing, you know, it's gotta be codified. It can't just be an informal, oh, yeah, okay, well, it's been two years, I think we'll take a, you know, a look at it.
It needs to be a process.
It, it absolutely needs to creep through the process to somebody, it has to be the sheriff on that thing, so that one, if your clock runs out.
Agreed.
Hey, Mr. Advocate, this applicant is going to do now.
Right, right, please meet with us and let's talk about it.
Right, yeah, 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 and, and, you know, I, I'm all for that, and I'm all for not putting that duration on completely, you know, just so we're all the same thing.
That, that I think ultimately, no, we're not trying to, uh, say hurry up, or you're just going, you know, hip top, hip top, I don't think that's over that, I think we're just, just like I said, you know.
Well, I think they did put a, they put a five-year thing in here, under recommendations number two, construction, when you structure it, nothing to mess down your lands within a five-year period.
And again, this is, this is your guide for the decision, under recommendation, I'll just tip on a few about them.
I mean, that was the long range. The long range planning was. They didn't want to see you get a ten acre P D D and it sit there for twenty-five years. Okay, that's why they come up with some type of, if you call it some sort of clause, or other projects that have P D Ds that have been sitting for years and years, like, not to be boy even firms to death here, but how that project had a P D D from years ago, and they sold that project off, so now the new guy's got the P D D.
Well, there's a new guy really on it, we seen a change in the time of that practice.
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, it's in his name or not, but if they haven't even done anything, and they have no intention of starting anything there in time soon, I mean, that's why I think the, the thought process was. Well, if he comes back in with that plan, it would never apply, you know what I mean, there's no green space at all, so.
These are your, your.
Well, yeah, well, that's what, why the sunset, the long range come up, let's come up, come up with something, pick, pick something.
Well, I, I, I think the part of stock is doesn't, I, I like the may, in person, I'm just happy working with the board and working with you guys and seeing the process, you know, may is always the great work. Because then the thing is, it puts it in the legislative board, they granted it, and go, you know, something, work and we're done, you know, um, automatically, no, you just never understand, Dave and I, Dave and I were sympathetic when we went through this talk before, because, you know, court permits are good for five years, it may take two, three, four to get a J D out of it, there's, you know, there's that, and there's that eight-year window right there.
Yeah, and, and economic conditions get in the way, and there are all sorts of.
So I, you know, so a firm, hard, dead duck now, I, I don't think we ever want to be in that position, that we're automatically revoked and doing and done, as much as where are we?
That can easily change by just inserting the word may, under, under the recommendation.
Right, and then, but the, I love the idea, you know, a two-year, three-year window of a sit-down, not just, not just, yeah, we're good, but, okay, where, where is the current plan, where is it crafted, does it make sense, what are the economics of what's going on, why haven't you gotten enough of where your last step was? Or fill us in, maybe there's more going on than we know.
You know, the communication should definitely be there.
But that, that, that tool, that the mandatory, you know, three-year check-in, or, you know, you said year, or every other year, or whatever, becomes a tool for communication, it's a driver, communication is needed.
I just wanted to, to sort of be back on what Tim said, I, I think, uh, that a ten acre minimum is, is what I think the P D D should be, shouldn't be anything smaller than that. Um, but also, um, the terminology in this is a little confusing relative to terminated and non-employed. Uh, the goal in the first paragraph says that the P D D major shall include the same automatic termination, uh, which is fine, but then in recommendation, it changes terminated to non-employed in a couple of locations. So I think, to me, non-avoid is confusing, uh, terminated is pretty straightforward, I think that should be straight.
Well, I think, yeah, there, you know, there's a lot of, uh, I think, creasurthing to do with, with this two-page document, back to the, your long-range committee, um, to maybe work with town attorney, to come up with language along the lines of what we've been talking about here for the last sixty days, last couple of, three meetings.
So, so just to hammer a couple of things down, we don't like the minor and major, correct?
Right.
And then, we don't like the nail in the coffin program, we're looking for some more.
Well, and shall out there, and to put may be deemed.
Okay, where are you at?
Under recommendation.
No. Where did you put shall at?
Well, there's a shall there now, just take the shall and put may be deemed terminated.
Such P D D, may be, not shall, may.
May be deemed terminated.
Second line.
When you hit the language of the P D D, uh. It's already in there. Maybe, so we're not changing anything.
And, and.
I think, I think what we're suggesting is a hard stop where the town board, after being two years or three years, has to sit down with the applicant and figure out, you know, where are we?
Is it so?
Where is it going, you know?
It's just even the project anymore.
Yeah.
Can I, can I make one statement, kind of down another rabbit hole, but kind of the same, isn't this really a problem with all zoning changes?
Absolutely.
How many times we had to revert a C R project that was fifteen years ago that never got off the ground, back to a different zone, so is it really just P D D, or is it all our zone?
So it may, it may be all our zoning, but.
Understood.
We're dealing with P D D right now.
Understood.
One, one, one thing at a time.
But should this be more how we change our zoning?
I think the C R thing, we may have seen that maybe once, maybe twice.
I've had to switch twice since I've been on the board, two of them.
So.
I think, I think the.
Yeah, let's, let's, I don't want to go down that rabbit hole, I'm just throwing that out.
So, Joe, we're, we're killing the minor and major.
I, I just want to say, I do think there could be a minor and major, because I don't want to see a ten acre residential P D D. I think we should just come in and say, I want our one.
Well, what, what? Was, was the differentiation, I mean, from the minor, when I read it before, was the true mixed use, was part of the definition, the law was described in it?
Right now, we do have a minor, if you will, in, in terms of what's known as a cluster, which probably is ten acres.
Well, I, that was, that was gonna be minor, so.
Some people want to do cluster, because, you know, there are limitations to the site in terms of what they, they can do, I want to do, I want two different types of housing.
So, I think, I think that minor, but I think the minors specifically spelled out that there was a mixed use development, if I remember correctly, in one, in the, in the graph that I saw.
Twenty-five acre being the minimum requirement as well as allowing residential. So what I read is that it has to be twenty-five acres to be residential.
Yes.
And I think that's good.
Well, that leaves, you know, keep the minor, keep a minor.
That's what I'm saying, we wouldn't.
Okay.
Well, I think you were saying the opposite.
No.
What about?
I was saying to leave.
Oh, that would leave the minor and major.
What about the idea that you have a twenty-five acre P D D, they want to put up this small convenience store within that area?
It's still overtiring.
You can't do that.
Okay. So we're tough.
No, just saying, get twenty-five.
If you want residential only, it has to be at least twenty-five acres.
Okay, that's what I just said, if you have a twenty-five acre P D D residential, you can't go open seven eleven.
That means you have over ten acres, so you qualify.
No.
No, you can, you can have, uh, twenty-five, you could actually, you could actually design something, mini, mini residential with other facilities within it, yes, you could.
And you're, you have a P D D.
Yeah, that is the essence of a P D D, we're just saying that if you only want to do residential only, not, then you, then you have to have a lot, you can't do that on a small field.
That'd be over.
And I, and I, and don't be cheap, if you're doing a ten acre P D D from mixed use, twenty-five or so, that has to be all these things?
Yes, well, the reason.
You're, you're stuck.
Well, the long, it's the same, well, yeah. The thing is, with, with that, with the long range, went around, we went around and around about that, but what we were saying is that we're giving you a break on acreage, we're not, we don't want to give it far more, so we wanted to keep the twenty-five percent green space on both.
I just think that's.
Tens or twenties. I think it's, well, so if you have a smaller project, which is only going to be seven acres, so like you were saying, Lord, if I have a seven acre project, or if you have a ten acre project, you just can have it. So that was what we went around with long range and stuff, say, hey, we'll give you the break on the acreage, but we're not giving you the break on the green space. Because if you had a twenty-five acre project, you need a twenty-five percent green space, that's quite good, maybe.
Not hard to find that right up.
Alright, so if you have a ten acre one, we were still looking for that same green space, we're giving you a break by dropping fifteen acres, but we didn't want, that was, Jen, if you.
Okay.
Right, that's what we talked about at long range, so, that's how we came up with it here, and last time we spoke about it at this meeting, everybody kind of agreed to the twenty-five percent, what's moving on. So I think, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I would want to give up the twenty-five percent personally, and not only that, but there's a movement of thought, uh, really promoted by the conservation advisory board, to look for some grant money and hire a consultant, study all the open space on standby. Uh, and over a period of time, and make recommendations as to, you know, what are the priorities, and, and what's the high priority, and even priority, and what should we do about it, so, I'm not in favor of giving up twenty-five percent, five dollars issue.
I'm not either. I mean, you gave them a fifteen acre break, but, in the hollow, and I understand they had a lot of property there, free, green property outside the whole town, but they didn't blink an eye about twenty-five percent. They didn't say, oh, wait a minute, you want that loss, they want. So I think that should stay.
I would, that means that they got.
Well. Now, now, the only thing on the termination, you want to come up with some type of language that they have a certain timeframe to report to the towns, just explain to the town what they're doing.
The two and the five years, no sense, that we talk about here.
Yeah, along, along with putting in may, it's a shall.
Yeah.
Um, I think that.
And changing null and voids to terminate.
Right.
Okay, where'd you see that from?
Under recommendations.
Yeah.
First sentence right there.
Certain, certain one.
The effective date of any P D D, such P D D may be deemed terminated.
Indeed, null and void, I got you, so you want to take off the null and void?
Yes, be consistent with other segments of this.
It occurs again in the recommendations down in the third line under the number two there, first one is null and void, should be terminated.
But there has to be, there has to be a provision for notice, and how a notice has to be served. And, and, you know, whether this board comes up with one where it sends to the town board, go, look, we support this idea, but you need a, you know, you're like, you, they can craft a language if you give them the idea of what you're looking for, you guys don't want to come up with specific, you can, look, they look, just get a, get a review timeframe, get a mandatory meeting timeframe.
However, that to them. Higher notice shall be, you know, given to the parties.
Yeah, right, there has to be a form of notice.
Right, this can't kill things.
Right. Oh, you're being a boss here, no?
I completely agree, Brad, there needs to be something.
I mean, you gotta, I'm paying it, guys, did you catch what Matt said about the two points he just made? That was. I don't know, I don't know everybody. Right, that Bob made two comments.
Well, when I, when I said to you guys, that either you could scriptively say, you know, try to come up with language and tell them that some kind of notice and meeting and review, or just tell the board, look, you guys need to come up, tell them to come up with it, promote the language, instead of you trying to draft one, right, and then they go, well, we want to say it this way, whatever, give them the theory of what you want.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think that's come up in the discussion, we, we provided the theory that, you know, hard stop, whether it's two years or thirty, uh, two and a half to three years, hard stop, town board has to engage with the applicant, to determine where the applicant is, and then go from there, when, when the town board wants to issue, uh, you know, a, a termination notice.
Or.
After that discussion, you know, they're free to do so after, after that discussion. If it's been voted on, progress, then terminate.
Did you catch the whole letter?
Obviously.
Okay.
And that, that's kind of.
And I mean, it's, it's in the room here to be able to help deliver the dialogue.
Yeah.
Hang, hang on, Brad, I'm. Okay, it's the same token, like I said, notice, where you have to give the applicant notice, proper notice. You also have to, I know, you also have to align what that applicant's responsibility is to come back, but. They just send you a note from now, if the town, you know, or if we're waiting for.
Yeah.
Do whatever. So I mean, is there a, you have to have a process, what they have to do.
They want fired. They want fired, and they're making, uh, notice to be given of five years. Today.
Right, but I mean, it has to be an outline, what they, what is the notice?
Whatever notice that they were to give early would have to be substantial to the town departments that, you know. Stick their teeth into it. They just can't say, oh, well, I.
Town feels it's by, and the information didn't provide the town a viable update.
Right.
Viable.
Viable update.
That's perfect.
But I'm also gonna say, uh, this isn't, I'm not trying to, to push this strictly for the developer. The town board needs to get involved.
Okay.
They need to be involved with this. They can't, it can't be one sided. The town board has to be proactive on this and work with them. Not say, okay, you didn't report, you're out. No.
Yeah, I would just add that, uh, the planning board should be kept informed also as to the status of the PDD. All of a sudden, we're going to see something, there's a PDD next door, we don't know the status of it.
Keep, keep it front and center.
Yeah.
I'm gonna stick with my idea that, uh, a major minor is not necessary.
Because.
Some people disagree.
Well, we're, we're, we're at least got a notice. Well, I, I fully agree, I, you know.
You get a PDD. It's kind of acres are greater.
Yeah, agree. Anybody else have any other comments?
I, I do like the major minor. Okay. Just want to vote on the major and minor. Alright, well, let's just, uh.
Put down the. There is substantial effect.
You guys want another month of this? Alright, maybe we take the notes and we try and tune it up.
Obviously, you know, discussion and, and voice given, and wait for a redraw. I, I think that's what this board would like to see at this stage. Okay, we just gave you stuff, we gave you themes, explore the themes, expand on, determine if we can give it back. I, I don't think you want to sit away while we're talking about it.
Yeah.
Back to the board, the comments are here, hopefully we got, you know, last time we didn't get audio, it was a fantastic discussion, and we got zero audio, you know, we were even.
Right.
I think the only other thing to bring up though is that maybe the town needs to look at cluster development as. Yeah, clusters already exist.
Alright.
You know, so it can be developed, flexibility, and, and again, um. You know, that.
I think we got enough to go back.
Yeah.
Yep.
There's enough meat there, we could, that the long range plant can go back at it.
We got enough of that. If, if they, just to put in an opener minutes early, if whoever's coming back to us, and they want the major and minor to stay, they would just give us a little more, uh.
Rational.
Yes, rational, and we go perfect. Okay. Oh, I sent out an email on the open space. Any boys of interest? Does anyone else have interest? And maybe possibly join that board whenever they materialize.
Yeah, I would. You know. Anyone who worked with all the team. All you guys. Oh, I mean, I, I thought it was just gonna be open. Should be open.
If two people want to be on it.
Yeah, well, then you guys can figure it out there. So.
As long as they don't tend to quote them.
Yeah.
I think there's one other piece of business that. After this guy with the, uh, constable forces.
Yeah, I, I will, we table, uh, forty four ten, forty four twenty, East River Road, because the applicant's not here. Yep, second, second motion by Dave, second by Tim, and any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
Okay, that's.
Uh, if, if that is, it's really the, uh, the son of the law that says, hey. Show up. Yeah, yeah.
Reviewers, they should have been those.
Are you gonna make a motion to adjourn? Apparently, those, you do want to stay for the.
Education. Yeah, that's true.
Motion. So will my Brad, second by Brad, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.